Go ahead and open up our regular board meeting for February 3rd, 2016 at this time. And if you could all either silence your cell phones or turn them off at the interlock. And when you do that, we'll have us all enjoying some pleasantries.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any additions or deletions?
We have one addition. We're going to talk about the broader intention.
Very good. Okay, our first item of business is public comment for anything that isn't on the agenda. And I see we've got some folks joining us today, so you must have some public comment. If you'd like to come up and sit there and just give your name and if you've got something you want to talk to us about.
Do you want to start?
No, you start.
Good morning.
Morning.
You from here? No, my name is Rhonda Dialle, and I have the All God's Creatures Pet Food Program. And the idea behind me starting this program was to teach the people in our community healthy pet ownership. It's a requirement, it's pay and neuter, and then we stop all these batches of puppies and all this. And we're just getting going. We haven't made an impact yet. And it is impossible not to notice that we do not have animal control here. Since I have started this a couple of years ago, getting involved with the animals, and every time I inquire, somebody says, "Well, we..." And just throws their shoulders down, well, I'm seeing really unhealthy things in our town. I am seeing packs of pit bulls down here, and I'm not willing to breed at all. This is people over breeding them and then just turning them loose. I saw them dragging a life setter down the road, and the setter was fighting for its life. We need somebody here to hold people accountable. And I realize we can't have a meeting and like put something in place next week. I'm asking for a jumping off point. I left probably four messages at the very least with our new sheriff. I understand he's busy. Then I was put off to Luke Campbell, and that message is there. Nobody would return any of my calls. I understand people are busy. But it seems like nobody wants to address this issue, and it's just getting worse. The people on South End, the little old people, if you look close enough, they all have their left arm not swinging because they're holding clubs, but they don't want to seem mean with them. They're holding them down so they can fight off the dogs. Now, that isn't right. So, I'm just asking for a jumping off point. I know you guys don't have the answers. I know you guys probably don't have a plan, but if you give us somewhere to start off with, I'll put the legwork in. If we need a petition, I'll do it. I'll stand out in the cold, I'll go door to door, whatever it is I have to do. But you need to give me a direction. That's all I'm asking for.
Okay. Well, Rhonda, I really appreciate those comments and those thoughts. And you do need to know, and you know, it still isn't the solution. And we're not going to do like the typical politician does and point this direction.
Oh, good, good.
Well, it's a county-wide issue, first and foremost. And you know, our town of Lakeview partners, we need to have them involved in this, you know, as we move forward. But we've had the discussion as a board, because we're frustrated with it too.
I'm so glad to hear that.
Well, a lot of times these things, you know, unfortunately, come down to dollars and cents. And we don't want that to stop us, because we do have a little bit of money that is collected through licensing fees and some different things for animal control. But the full-blown program, just because I think that's probably why you're all here, just to share with you just some thoughts about what we're talking about, with the hope that we can get there. And we've talked to the sheriff about it on a couple of occasions, and you're correct, he is swamped. But he's aware of it and concerned about it. We have a nuisance issue throughout the county, which doesn't have anything to do with the dogs. We have a weed problem throughout the county on these different land bases. And we have a group that works pretty hard on that, the Lake County Weed Board. And then we have a dog or an animal control problem. And we believe we couldn't afford to just put an animal control position in. That's really expensive when you figure in the salary and the vehicle and places to house them and feed them and do all the things you need to do. But we think we might be able to combine all three of those things into one position. But we haven't gotten to the point where we've gotten down to the nitty-gritty on all the costs. What we're talking about, quite a bit of money. But there's a commitment by this board to try and get to that point. So, what you're saying is not lost on us.
I'm glad to hear that. And the other thing that I was thinking of, that I just came up with the other day, or I would have done some checking on it, is, is it possible to write a grant?
Anything is possible, but it's good that you mentioned that, because you know, when we sat down and pencil it out and answer our treasure, and I don't want to put her on the spot. But when I think about it, fully equipping the program with all that's necessary, you know, that's going to be an upfront, fairly significant cost. But the more important cost, as we look at our overall budget, is the ongoing cost. You know, grants help out well for some startups, some specialized things, and it doesn't mean we wouldn't try and go that way. But as a board, we need to be responsible in making sure we can sustain it.
Ongoing, yes, of course.
Because I think most of you in here know, once upon a time, we had animal control, and it had to go away. We don't, if we bring it back, we don't want that to happen. We want to be able to sustain it.
Of course, of course. And another one of the ideas that I had was more enforcement of making people have their dogs registered. You know, I can't remember what it's called.
Well, getting your tags and making sure you've got your shots.
Because that would create some money. I'm not saying that if we got a grant and we got something in place that now will take care of all the ongoing costs. But if all these people that I know that are responsible pet owners, that are, you know, really interested in making this work, would step up and pay that fee and have that little thing, you know, then there's the money right there. And it would be a yearly thing that, you know, change the color, so we would know each year if that pet had been registered.
Well, and that's the way it used to be. We used to, I wouldn't say we would, we used to register our dog every year bringing in the shots and all that. So, you're exactly right. But what we have to get to, the point we have to get to, is having someone that that's what they're doing, you know, among other duties. Because they're checking, when they have a stray animal, they're checking to see if the tag is current. And they're contacting the owner. And they're coming in and registering their pet and making sure they have that tag and they pay that fee so that we can have those continuing services. So, you're exactly right.
Now, so, as far as you guys are concerned, I'm just wondering, where does this go from here? You guys already, you know, you said that you're concerned, you're looking at it and everything. Where does this go from here, like today when we leave here?
Well, as we here in the, I don't know what the timeframe is, we're getting started on our budget for next year, the early stages.
Oh, good.
And so, when we actually have the introductory meeting on it, on not only the schedule, but on assumptions and on and on and on, it'll probably be brought up again at that time. Do we want to, you know, I'm going to go back to the sheriff for a minute. Three weeks ago, I sat down and even talked about this very thing again, you know, just to see where he was at and what his thoughts were. So, we'll probably discuss it then and see, you know, how we think we might be able to do this, if it is doable this year, how we, you know, would structure it. There's just a whole bunch of questions we've got to get answered by more than just this board.
Right, and I understand that, but to me, it's not if, it's how.
Yeah.
You know, and sitting around saying you can't do something. I was told I couldn't start my own nonprofit. I did meth for 30 years, I was clean for six years when I started it, and everybody just shook their head. Well, now I have it. Now I'm doing what they said I couldn't do.
Very good.
Well, and that's what I'm going to do with this animal control. I am not out to cost this animal a bunch of money. If you guys would tell me a way to do this without costing y'all anything, or I had to put in a ton of legwork, I would do it. Really.
Well, before, Commissioner Winters has got some things he wants to say, but when you said this town, well, you said this town. I think I would appreciate it if you would share the same concerns with the town council, maybe if they're next week.
Absolutely.
Get on their agenda.
Do you know what it is?
We've got a council member here. I don't want to put him on the spot, but...
Oh, Lance.
He's on the second Tuesday at 4:00.
Yeah. But you know, it's not just a county, it's not just a town, it's not a Paisley, it's a Christmas Valley, it's all of us.
Yeah, yeah, and it's a huge county.
Everyone needs to be able to hear from you on this, so.
It's a huge county. And just so you know, I have been based in Lakeview, and I'm going to do my first outreach to New Pine Creek, hopefully this month.
Okay.
I'm working with the people down the store that are going to let me set up out front. And then after that, I go to Paisley, then I gear up and go to Christmas Valley. So, I'm hoping that all of this kind of comes together as I start working, you know, at the tail end of this, start working on Christmas Valley and those hoarding situations up there.
Yeah.
I'm going to go and spend the night, go to people's houses. I'm not taking their word for it, that they're not collecting and hoarding animals. I'm not passing out pet food, after all the trouble I went through, to people that are not being healthy about pet ownership. I'm just not going to do it.
Well, you pretty much covered what I was going to say. For all that we've done in the past is, we do have animal control. That is done through our sheriff's department. We put a set amount of money into our sheriff's site, and we've raised that a little bit over the years. It's not enough, and it won't pay for a person, but it helps to address some of the more chronic issues, you know, there's a dog bite, those type of things.
Yeah, but there is ones, and I get that.
And that's where we're at today. What Dan said, and I'm a little bit more straightforward, is the partnership. The dogs know the difference in Ninth Street and Tenth Street.
Right.
Ninth Street this way is all the city. So, this has to be a partnership. If we're going to put together an animal control officer, it's going to take a partnership financially and jointly with the town and the county. So, as Dan said, to go before the town is as important as it is to come before the county.
I just needed a place to start. If you guys send me five places I need to go, I'll go.
Yeah. Well, the way it works in our world is, the town has jurisdiction over lots of corporations. That's Ninth Street this way, the railroad tracks out west, and I'm trying to think, not exactly, it's sort of jogged up north. But so, animal control in that part of it is their responsibility. So, it's going to take a partnership for both of us. We're outside the, or outside the incorporated parts of Paisley and Lakeview. That's where our sheriff has the jurisdiction. They still go to calls in those places, but an animal control is going to take a partnership. So, and it all boils down to finance, it all boils down to money, and being able to sustain it in the future. Like, you talk about grants, and there's grants that aren't possible, but we have to deal with the budget every year and sustain that. The worst thing is to start a program and then for it to fail.
I completely agree with that. And to get this going, if we did, if we were able, there's a lady here that is a professional grant writer. I started a class a while back. And she's an animal advocate also. If we could get a grant written to get us an animal control officer and the training they need and all that initial cost, it would probably be easier to picture a yearly cost or whatever, however that is, you know. It would probably be easier to picture that if we had something in place to offer you guys, saying, "Hey, maybe we could take care of this. Could we get together with the other agencies or whatever and make something work?" You know, if each town or whatever, somehow, I don't know how this works, but if each town had some kind of a thing where they were licensing their pets, and the money went into the pool for the officer, you know what I mean? There's got to be some way we can do this.
I believe all licenses instead of perfs offices. I don't believe Paisley is only other incorporated town that I think...
But you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Get it going to where people know they have to have their animals registered, you know, make it a law. You know you're going to have something rolling around a checkbook.
It is already a law, and I've given examples many years ago. Whenever Dave Fratata was the, now, for license, calling vetting ticket, but town, it was all... If he picked up, say, our dog or somebody else's that was licensed and paid shots, do not get a ticket. You go and get that done with the perfs office and pay those fees, and he would give you a ticket and work very well, create a revenue stream as you thought.
Yep.
We have that in place, we just don't have the animal co-tying, co- reinforcement officer.
Right, and I get that. You know, not too long ago, there was a situation, but it was flatly out of town, and it was not at city limits, and there were some animals really being mistreated, and a lot of calls were made. But there's only so much the officers can do. Like I told the other people involved, if a cop rolls up and there's nine dogs being mistreated, what do you expect him to do? They're all chain of tires, there's blood out there, there's dead cats, there's all this stuff going on. What is this cop going to do? Get these dogs and his vehicle, then where is he going to take them?
Well, I don't want to take this too much further, but I can tell you, and with Commissioner Shalton, I'm too, incidents where we have taken all down. We have...
I did not know.
The Northlake, yes, all the way down to the chicken, and it was quite expensive. And the Redwood Community Society stepped up and helped quite a bit.
I have no idea. Where was that?
It was in Christmas Valley, within the last six years.
Yeah.
So, we have, and we've had some worse issues and everything. We have addressed a lot of them.
Oh, you have no idea?
Yes, we have.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your time.
You betcha. Me and the other folks, we've got, I have a 10-10, I suppose we could open that.
Did you really speak on...
We'll go ahead and open up our 10-10 public hearing on the city and renewables, mineral rights.
Yeah.
And we'll be hearing from our planning director, Darlin Johnson, here, just in a few minutes on that.
I'm sorry, I'm hard of hearing, but are we at the end of the pet thing?
Well, that's up to you.
I got stuff to say.
Yeah, we had a public hearing, we had, it was timed, we just opened it up, but now we're going to set it aside for the moment, so you can come on out.
Go ahead.
You might.
Yeah, I do too.
I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing, that's why, I didn't mean it.
Laurie, bear with us for just a little bit here, Laurie. Excuse me, just a minute. You want...
Yeah, she's on.
Okay.
My name's Marty Grovost, and I live down at Seven Fourth, on the corner of South 11th and H, where there's about five acres of open land with the place that I live in on the, in the corner of that property. You were talking about the sheriff's involvement as far as animal control and so on and so forth. And I've been personally involved with the sheriff's department on some animal control issues, probably seven to eight, maybe nine different times. One of the officers was nice enough to take the time, and he brought out the book. And we spent almost an hour going through statutes and laws and bylaws and ordinances and so on and so forth, to finally come and determine the fact that I am well within my right, as a citizen of the state of Oregon and a citizen in the county of Lake, that it is my right 100% to euthanize the dogs that I was having problems with. My personal belief, it wasn't really the dog's problem, it was the owner, but unfortunately, it's illegal to euthanize the owners, which is something we probably ought to talk about. The last involvement I had, I called the sheriff's department, I talked to the dispatcher. I said, "Would you please advise X, Y, Z, this is what just happened." She called back and said, "He asked that you would please shoot the animal." I'm, I live at South 11th and H. There's a few houses close by.
I call it Danny Fitzgerald property, but that's probably before your time.
Yeah.
Tim Tucker.
Yeah, Tim Tucker, over there. It's where the concrete I live for a...
Yeah, I know.
Rocky, Rocky's old place. I have chickens that are in pens. The pen is a good pen. They don't, they don't escape. Two of them fly, but they don't fly outside. My dog is pushing 12 years old. She has dysplasia in both hips and can barely get around. She never does not leave the property. So, the fact that when these animals get out, they have a history of killing other animals, that has been spotted. And we do have people in the room that can, will attest to that. The officer that I spent the time with says, "If I come out, you'll be lucky if I come out the same day." He said, "Gentlemen, we answer one in 20 calls and generally, within a week." That has absolutely no bearing on reality whatsoever. If the dogs in my yard killing my chickens or chasing my dog are causing damage in my yard, I need somebody there right away. If not, then I am left up to my right, as a citizen of the state and of the county, to euthanize the animal. My question is to this board at this point, where we're going, is that acceptable to you? Because that's what I've been left with, and that's what I've been told I should do by our sheriff's department.
Well, Marty, I can only speak for myself, that discussion, you know, I appreciate what the deputies spent the time talking to you about and looking at. Our elected sheriff is the one that needs to make that call. As far as the support by the county or not.
What I'm saying is, if there's nobody that I can call when the situation happens?
Well, what I'm saying is prayer to that.
Oh, the sheriff, I mean, this is in the Oregon State statutes?
Yeah.
It also follows in the county statute, so the sheriff doesn't really have anything to say. It is written law backed up by paragraphs and pages to pages of if, the thousands, or buts.
Yeah.
Which I'm not, I don't like it, I'm not a sheriff.
Yeah.
I don't need to ask his permission to do so.
Well, no, I'm not saying that, but when you're asking us as a board and...
Well, I'm asking you as a fellow, as a fellow citizen of this town, is that what you want to see happen? Because I'm asking you straight up, is this how you want us to begin to take care of the problem in our neighborhood?
Ultimately, no. Ultimately, is that we, as we were talking with Rhonda, is that we get a program in place that takes care of it.
Yeah, and you kind of said that this is what the sheriff, we have, sheriff has money, and this is what the sheriff will do. Well, I'm here to attest to what the sheriff told me they will do.
Yeah.
And what the sheriff told me my rights are as a citizen.
As Commissioner Winters said, we have a little bit of money that goes into the sheriff's budget. What we need to do for our county, county-wide, is have a program that there's actually somebody, that's what their job is, is animal control.
When you have a situation where there's an individual that has a group of animals and cannot contain them, and they've committed murder more than once, more than twice, probably two, half a dozen different times, people in the community have called, seen the animal dragging dogs down the street. There's been a horse attack, I mean, there's a wide variety by the same individual. Why can't they do something with that individual? Why can't he be held responsible? Or should I go to his door and demand justice? Again, as long as I don't hurt him or cause any, you know, I have that right. But is that what we want to get back to the old West days, where steal my horse, I'm going to shoot you. Mess with my chickens, I'm going to shoot you.
No, I hear you completely. No, I don't want to...
That's where we're at today. I mean, that is why I'm here. I've got a doctor's appointment in about 15 minutes, so I really don't even feel like being here, but it is important.
Yeah.
You know, my dog, I've never had children, and I've had three dogs for a period of over 40 years. They're as close to me as your wife is to you, I promise.
Yep.
And I would fight for them the same as you would fight for your wife. So, all the rhetoric and all the bull of, "Well, maybe this and that is the reason she's..." Don't mean squat. When you get down to bottom line, I need to protect my animals and my property, and I've been told to shoot. If they come close within proximity and show any aggressive behavior, I was told I have the perfectly legal right to shoot to kill.
So, you sound like you researched all that quite well.
I did, because I know what else to do.
The only thing I caution you about, and I would talk with the sheriff, is maybe you have the right to take that outlaw, but you have the right to shoot within residential areas, so you might...
I promise you, at that point, I don't care. I will go to jail if that's, that dog was in the tax line.
And you ask us if we support one way or another. I'm just letting you know that there might be other questions that come along with your statements here today. As far as the sheriff being there as soon as you get the call, are the deputies...
Oh, we know that, we know what...
They're going to prioritize their calls.
We're both adults here, we know how the world works.
So, when you ask us the question, I'm answering your question, sir, is that they're going to prioritize the calls. 420 miles from Lake County, you have probably eight deputies, and they're not all on the clock at the same time, so...
So, it's extremely unreasonable to ask them to perform all their duties. It's human imperfection.
Sometimes, there is times that they're going to prioritize the calls that come in, and they're not going to be available.
Well, maybe, maybe through, you know, through this discussion, maybe there should be a community-based organization and a charitable organization evolved to handle these things, that the sheriff's department would accept, back up. I mean, you know, maybe not back up with guns or nothing, I'm not, I'm talking about, you know, say, when somebody in the community is deputized or something, to act in their behalf on these certain situations. Why can't we talk about something like that? Could, you know, I come from a law enforcement family.
I don't, when you, before you came up, Marty, you said you couldn't hear everything real well. So, I don't know if you heard some of that earlier discussion, but I think that's where we're at, not so much the deputizing, but taking this discussion towards more action. We, as a board, feel that way. We've had discussions with the sheriff. The town needs to be involved, not the town of Lakeview and the city of Paisley. We, as a community, county-wide, need to get there, not...
There are a couple from my neighborhood here, there's a few people from the neighborhood, because we have a problem in our neighborhood. And I promised that each and every one would donate 10 hours a week or 10 hours a month. I mean, all of these people would, that's why they're here, and that's why I'm here. Because we know, and I'm not trying to be a hard case, you know, I just wanted my intent to be perfectly understood. And where all of us are willing, capable in different areas, maybe not so much monetarily, but maybe with time, maybe with a vehicle, maybe with supplies for trapping and catching and relocating, so. I mean, we, given, I think, Rhonda, what did Rhonda call it, jumping off point, or tell us, have somebody have a meeting with her, some, tell us, if you would check and get the, you know, petition in this neighborhood, if, you know, if you can get 5,000 or 2,000 or 500 people to sign and, you know, get some sort of conversation. I know it's not going to, you know, nobody's, the batteries in my magic wand are very well worn out, they won't fix this. But it has to start with some very meaningful conversation and not a lot of political rhetoric. And I appreciate you gentlemen for being candid and making this available. And I think I will do exactly what you recommended, as a citizen or the town council.
Yeah.
And, but it's also as hard as just a citizen to sit up here and just know I'm going to make a fool out of myself, that I really don't know everything that I'm talking about, and I don't know what's legal and what's...
Well, Marty, you're not making a fool out of yourself. You're bringing forward some concerns that are real, and they're concerns we have. And we need to get the key players together to have a bigger discussion on how do we, how do we get to where we all want to get.
You have one of the best workbases sitting right here, that people willing to work.
Yeah.
For three, for a common goal in our community, make our community better. Bottom line, that's where it is. So, if you can help us with any direction, there's a large portion, a large number of people that would gladly become involved in that.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Just hope asked to Rhonda, so is everybody here part of your 501(c)(3)? No?
No, actually, I, excuse me, I'm the only member of All God's Creatures. These are just people from the community.
Okay, well, I'm just trying to brainstorm with Marty's thoughts of the group that could get together to help out. If we could ever get anything going, would your 501(c)(3) be that organization to pull all that together to be a part of?
If it couldn't fall under that legally, we would create another 501(c)(3).
Because there has to be protection for the people on that, that type of stuff. Just brainstorming as you guys are talking.
Yeah, we work together on situations where two-legged creatures have problems, and we work together in that arena.
That's right.
But, you know, our community, you know, my neighborhood has been directly assaulted here in the past few months, and it's been going on for...
I've called the cops four times in the last three months, I'd say. Luckily for me, apparently, they arrived in an hour, but by then, the dogs are gone, gone. And the last time, I wasn't really happy about it. They called the owner, because I knew whose dog it was, and it's the same one. Rick Cartwright's dog, Pitbull, is the one that goes around killing deer. He's killed about three of the wild cats. Not that I, I have too many wild cats, but they are all neutered, and I feed them, and it, and it shouldn't be going around killing animals. I live on South 12th and H on the corner.
We're back-to-back neighbors.
Yeah, yeah, about a block, we're a block away, each end of the block. And just, my husband just recently witnessed the dog carrying a cat, because my husband walks my, walks our dog every morning, carrying a cat, just in that next alley from ours, right from our house. And when he saw my husband, he put it down, and the poor cat stuck his head up like that, and then put it back down. And the dog ran, because my husband had hit him with a pellet gun before when it was over killing our cats. The same pit bull, we know who owns it. And then the officer comes out this last time and tells me that he called the owner, Rick Cartwright, and that Rick said, "Well, he's been taking his..." Rick Cartwright, and that Rick said, well, he's been taking his dogs to work with them. Well, it was his dog that killed that cat that morning, and then the officer thankfully went over and picked up the cat and took it to the vet, but it had to be put down. And it killed a few of our animals. My husband had pellet gun, pellet gun in, and I told the officer, that dog shows up in our yard again, it's getting a bullet.
And then, and then she didn't, my name's Del Provost, living with Marty out there. The, the, the dogs were back just last week, two days.
Yeah, and I called.
There's two of them, they run loose, there's, there's another.
It's the male pit that kills everything.
There's another home. I'm an animal lover having all my life, I love all animals more than most people, although God's placing on my heart to care for people as well. But, there's nothing I wouldn't do to try to help this situation. You know, my, my doggone heart is in this, and time doesn't always equal money, okay? That's not where it is for me. So, there's nothing I won't do, my phone number's 541-4171664. Please call me, anybody with any, anything, any reason pertaining to the animals needing help in this community, because I'm here to help. And I, I was on my way to church one Sunday morning, there were two dogs loose last year. A sheriff was trying to round them up, he couldn't do it, I walked over, he was like, oh, no, 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 stay back, stay away from them dogs. Animals love me. I was able to round the two dogs up, the sheriff couldn't do it. I did it, I took them to the vet, you see? You know, so, somebody who is not only willing and able, but yet capable, is what we need, you know? I understand that's not their priority, but we also meet people, Marty and I do, at the street level, working with, like we ministers with the Food Share Program. We know a lot of these people who can't take care of themselves, much less animals. You know, one of them, just a block away, has four small dogs, and they open up the door all the time, and them dogs are running loose in the neighborhood, you know? And, and so, you know, my concern is, is not just for the other animals, but for that specific, particular animal in and of itself. You know, we see them hungry, they're starving, their rids are sticking out, they're cruising our neighborhood, and they have been every day for the year that we've lived there. And then when we hear a gunshot, we do fear that somebody's taken it into their own hands, but we will protect our animals, and as Marty said, you know, they're our love, and it would break my heart if I ever had to do that.
Yeah.
I want to say one more thing, please, just since somebody brought up that one name, I didn't want to pointy fingers, but this guy, Rick Cartwright, I do not know him, but his dogs have had the cops call on them more times than you could count, and they keep chewing up little old people's cats in front of them, and different stuff, and all these little old people know that I'm an advocate, and that I'm trying to help, and they keep calling me. I don't know what to say. They called the cops, cops have went and talked to this guy. The guy just says, oh, well, I'll take them to work, I'll tie them up, and the next day they're out. Chewing up people's pets in front of the people. I don't, you know what, I'm not trying to be poopy at all, I understand that we don't have this animal control officer in place, but at the same time, if we are supposed to pick up the phone and call dispatch and say, hey, my cat just got chewed up, people are expecting something to happen, not to see those two pit bulls out, you know, chasing old people, they chase old people, older dogs, all this stuff, so my only point is, I think we, people don't know what to do.
Yeah.
You know, nobody shows their dog out in the middle of the night, and he got chased off the porch, and he's old, and, you know, they just.
I think this discussion, thank you, Marty, I think this discussion probably needs to go to another level. You know, we've already mentioned some of the other entities, governmental entities like the town and so forth, but within law enforcement, because I'm hearing, I'm hearing everything you're saying, and that the answers that we can provide are probably going to be more budgetary.
Right, right, and I understand.
But the folks who actually are going to do the work and provide that service need to be in these discussions.
I understand, and I also understand that you guys are like, you know, you sit in an office, and these guys are out in the street, so when these guys out in the street are telling you that they're doing stuff and taking care of things, I can guarantee you, it's not always happening.
Yeah. I don't think our law enforcement feels like, you know, they feel pretty hamstrung, because as Commissioner Winter said.
I'm sure.
You know, they get a call because someone just broke into somebody's house, or this or that, and they get a call that his animal.
And I understand that, I get it.
So, they're frustrated too, and we're trying to resolve that, and we're pretty committed to making a positive outcome out of this.
I just would like a couple words. The pit bull that's the problem that's killing most of the animals and wildlife, that goes after deer and everything too, and horses, it lives a couple blocks from me, and in the middle of those two blocks, so a block away from them, about a block away from me, is the school bus stop, and I'm afraid that it's gonna take that pit bull going after some little kid that runs before somebody's done about it, I just want to say that.
Okay.
I've called the sheriff every time.
Yeah.
And luckily for me, they've been there in an hour, but by then, they, like I said, last time, they already, they call them first, they call the owner, instead of taking the dog, you know, they call the owner, and then, of course, by the time the cock gets there, the dog's gone, but we know which dog it is, and the whole neighborhood knows what dog it is.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Okay.
We'll see how we can unfold this and find a positive outcome.
Please let us know.
Okay. You bet. Thank you. Thank you. Darwin. We'll continue on with our general rights request hearing. Lori, you still there?
I'm still here.
Thank you.
Set this closer to us all. Thank you. Like I do give you a brief summary.
Yep.
Try to keep it brief. Obsidian Renewables owns multiple tax lots and projects in the county, of which they have recent land use approval for solar projects on. Part of their objective to obtain financing is to make sure that the properties are all clear of any incumbents on the title. We're here today to talk about a mineral rights request that they've made, actually made back in August. We've taken the steps according to the ORS language, which is in ORS 275.312. Legal counsel's been involved the whole time, back in December, we made, the board made an order to move forward on advertising for this hearing today, which has been published four consecutive weeks prior to the hearing, which was set six weeks out. The properties in question, there's three properties that, after a mineral rights report came back, that there was no substantial value or valuable value on these properties, which are Blackcap II, Fremont, and Lost Forest associated. Legal descriptions are in the packets as well. This, there was also two other projects that the mineral rights geologist's report showed that there may be value on those, so those weren't moved forward. But, we're here today to make determination, to find a determination, if we believe there's no value to those properties, and that the county then can set a minimum value, which.
Value to those mineral rights, not property.
Yeah, the mineral rights, yeah, the surface rights are already owned by Obsidian Renewables or their subsidiary businesses. The statute allows for the county to set a minimum value on these. I have with me today the email that I sent to you guys, Jim Bailey, Legal Counsel, that gave my recommendation, which was ten acre, or sorry, ten dollars per acre, established as the base value with no less than a hundred feet charged for future requests that are less than ten acres. The rough estimate of each of these properties is a hundred acres of land associated with the three different projects, so. I will, Lori may have those final numbers, I need to, Blackcap is the only one I have a question about because of the street vacations and such that have also happened in other hearings and settings. But, I would definitely continue with that recommendation of Tim's which made, and certainly answer any questions you have.
Well, the hearing process is lit, the public give us testimony, then we'll probably ask you after that.
Yeah, so, do we have any public testimony related to this hearing?
Lori, you on the phone, do you have any other comments?
I didn't hear that last comment, I heard Darwin's summary loud and clear, thank you. Your summary was great, that's exactly what we're looking for, is to just clear the titles for these properties to make it an easy and clear decision for financiers. So, yes, our aim is to just try and reduce the hurdles that we have to getting projects financed. I would just say, as, just a basic comment, there's some things happening in Oregon that may make solar development come back to the forefront again, so we are expecting to be able to develop our Lake County properties for solar. So, we're very interested in moving forward on that.
So, Darwin or Denise, was there any written testimony, any verbal testimony come in?
I received nothing.
Legal counsel and I have had, you know, many email conversations back and forth, of which some of you have been privy to. The latest was, there are a few in holding properties on the Blackcap project that they've since acquired that weren't part of the legal description moving forward, and it has been explained to Obsidian as well back to me from Legal Counsel, that we can't add those to this list since they weren't published. But, there are seven different small OBL lots that at some future point, I'd say, may need to come forward. My recommendation is that the study that was already performed continued to be valid, but they looked at the whole project area of which there are just a few alternatives, but, so really, we probably just need to move forward on an order to then set this hearing, a hearing similar to this in the future.
Hey, Darwin, I actually have a follow-up comment on those seven OBL lots. I actually went back to the instrument, and it turned out none of those, the original instrument for transferring mineral rights to the county was very specific about individual lots, and none of those individual lots seem to be included. So, I think, I think that issue is off the table.
Right. Should speed it up a bit?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, that's all we wanted, was to just have a clean title report, and that, that seems to be the case, so.
Okay, since we have no additional public comment on this, at this time, 10:43, we will close the hearing and have discussion with the board and with our planning director. And Lori? The sheriff?
Well, what I've got, we have three different, if we decide to go forward, there's no negative, there's no opposition to this from the public, there's actually no comment at all from the public on this, so, we need to go ahead and approve of this. We have three different orders, there's some discriminatory errors that need to be corrected on those, and we are not a county court, we're Board of Commissioners, all three of them have county courts in a couple different places, so that would need to be corrected if we approve this. I only caught that this morning, or else we'd already, just prior to the meeting, this is probably cut and paste off the.
Yeah, Orange County.
The Orange County District Court. This is the first one we've done, at least during my time, and so, whenever we talk about the value of a minimum of a hundred dollars, ten acres or less, and the other ones being ten dollars per acre, that's not an absolute, we're not setting that as absolute, it's the minimum that we can charge. I'm not saying we're gonna charge more than that today, but I want to make sure as we're setting this, the precedent, precedence is that there's latitude on the cost. This is a minimum, ten dollars per acre, ten dollars, or a hundred dollars minimum for ten acres or less, is just a starting point, depending on the value of the potential property, the mineral rights and everything, we will have the latitude to look at the value we charge for relinquishing the mineral rights.
Hey, Darwin?
She can't hear me.
You're the only person I can hear clearly, essentially, I'm missing.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Move it higher, Lori.
I was just doing, making sure there's some discriminatory errors corrected on the order that will take care of here, we're Board of Commissioners, not a court, so that will be taken care of. The other thing I was mentioning is that the ten dollars per acre and the minimum of a hundred dollars for ten acres is a base, that we were not setting precedent, that will be the absolute. We will continue, if we have more of these coming forward, be able to charge more if that is the direction and recommendation made to us, so I just want to make that, make sure that's in public record. That's pretty much all I was bringing forward, did you understand all that, Lori?
Let me, can I play back, and I think that was Brad speaking.
Yes, it was, it was Brad.
Okay, so, the minimum of ten dollars per acre is what's being considered.
Correct.
For this particular instance, maximum of a hundred dollars for ten acres?
Minimum of a ten acre. Is it a ten acre or less?
Which doesn't apply in this case, Lori, it's just, well, it's my recommendation for future projects that are less than ten acres, that a minimum of a hundred dollars or so.
And then, and I think, first for public record, you're saying that you would reserve the right to charge more than ten dollars per acre?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
One thing I just want to point out too, and I'll try to speak loudly so Lori can hear me, is that the applicants have, you know, Obsidian did set down a deposit of five thousand dollars, which is to cover all costs associated with the investigation, and they work for this process, which includes, you know, publishing in the paper, having the geologist do his study, with all, all, you know, Jim Bailey and our time that we're putting into this. And then also, at the end, as we're in this process, the county has that option to set a minimum value for the mineral rights. And then, after that's told, then it needs to be paid before the deeds are actually transferred in the court.
Right, so to reiterate what Darwin just said, we are essentially, we're paying all the costs for the process, and then whatever amount to transfer the rights is being contemplated.
I have no further questions.
I don't either, Commissioner.
So, so with that, do we have order numbers, or is it a motion with?
Orders don't have numbers according to the equipment. Orders don't have numbers according to the equipment.
Okay, we're just looking up at the top.
Just the motions.
Okay, so, there's three different ones, I'll make the motion to approve in the matter of conveying mineral rights reserved to Lake County to owner of surface rights. Says we'll be for Blackcap Solar II solar project.
I'll second it. Any other discussion?
Did you say a value?
Oh, good catch.
Yeah.
And to, I'll amend my motion. Within my motion, I would like to take the recommendation from our planning director at ten dollars per acre.
And I will second that as well.
Thank you.
And I just didn't hear, did the motion include all three properties? So, we're looking at Blackcap Solar, Fremont Solar, and Lost Forest Solar.
We have three different orders, Lori, we'll do three different motions.
Ah, gotcha.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion in the matter of conveying mineral rights reserved to Lake County to owner of surface rights at ten dollars per acre for Fremont Solar Project.
I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to approve in the matter of conveying mineral rights reserved to Lake County to owner of surface rights for the Fremont Solar Project. Any other discussion? At ten dollars, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'll make a motion in the matter of conveying mineral rights reserved to Lake County to owners of surface rights, ten dollars per acre to the Lost Forest Solar Project.
I'll second that. I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve in the matter of conveying mineral rights reserved to Lake County to the owner of surface rights at $10 per acre for the Lost Solar Project. Any other discussion?
Just to make sure it's in there, that before these are recorded, all scripular directions will be made.
Do you have to do a motion on the warranty deeds as well?
On the what?
Warranty deed. Each order has a warranty deed attached. There's also the non-disturbance agreement?
No, the non-disturbance is a separate.
So, the non-disturbance, just for clarification, was if it wasn't agreed upon and Obsidian was comfortable with the amount, the minimum amount set on this value for the Blackcap project, so it doesn't apply now. And as for the warranty deeds, this order says that you're going to make the warranty deed, so I don't think we need an order necessarily for it. The warranty deeds need some cleaning up of the.
So, perhaps, and we do have that motion to be voted on, but perhaps Denise makes a good point. Our language maybe can say in what Denise is capturing there, cleaning up the per acre minimum cost as well as $100. But the warranty deeds are inclusive of these, approval of these orders. Just to make sure that we recognize we had it.
So, on the order, it does say specifically that, you know, upon receipt of the value, then you will.
The only reason I think it's important to get it in the notes, Darwin, is most people aren't going to go look at the, and it'll be in the notes. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that's it. Lori? I think, I think it's done.
All right, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Have a great day.
You too.
Bye.
Bye. Okay, we have had some folks in the audience patiently waiting. Ann, would you like to come up and do some demonstration?
Do you need a break by any chance?
That's what I was suggesting.
Well, please do. Thank you for all you do, take all the time you need.
This is very fast. Yours is very fast.
Yeah, and then I'd like to, there's going to be a VOKA discussion. I'd like to be present for that, too.
So, let's go up to the.
Okay.
Let's do the break.
As Commissioner Winter says, let's do a seven-minute break. We'll come back, we'll recess and come back at a later point. Thank you.
...at eleven o'clock approximately. That was Jamie.
It is me.
Oh, okay. And next up, we have Ann from our treasure to talk about the 2016-17 budget calendar revision.
Yes.
Anne, welcome.
Thank you, thank you again for all you do this morning. The budget calendar, we did talk about a couple of weeks ago, and as soon as I sent that out saying here's the approved calendar, I had a couple of committee members go, oopsie d'eees, missed something I was skipping. So before you is the new and approved edition. And the biggest note is that the meetings now, the public meetings with the managers to present their budgets is April 13th and April 15th. So we're maintaining the Wednesday, Friday meeting dates, but it is now two weeks before we had planned earlier. With that, there is a little bit less time for managers to get information back to me. There's a little bit less time for me to prepare your binders. So it's doable, though, when I make this work.
Okay.
Okay?
So we need to actually approve that, I guess.
Yes, please.
Just to say what's right, I'll move to approve the budget calendar, calendar as amended, which reflects our budget meetings as April 13th and 15th, if only you correct.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded to approve the fiscal year 1617 budget calendar adjustments in times for the regular budget meetings as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead since, Anne, you mentioned and Jay did on the Voca plan, we'll just stay in order and talk about that for a second here.
Okay, on the Voca, the reason why the ratification is, is because these were brought to me to sign. There's some time frames, and these had them reviewed by legal counselors that came to us, and so all were, I mean, portions of it almost three months behind time, I believe, maybe more than that, if I'm thinking right. And so these have been signed by me and others to be able to get these grants up to compliance. Other than that, I don't have a whole lot to say, but I'm interested in what they have.
Um, there are three different grants that the VA's office participates in. Voca is the Victim of Crimes Act. They are federal dollars that are passed through the state, but they maintain their federal identity. As such, there's specific rules surrounding the Voca dollars. I'm not sure which grants you're ratifying. There is one that's the Voca, and it's also called the Criminal Fine Act with an account, which is state. That is a grant that started October 1st on the federal calendar year, and that might be what you're ratifying.
There's the first one that I have here, the date was October 1st, 2015. It's for the 217 Voca, CFA non-competitive grant.
Perfect, okay, so make sure we're talking.
So that's one of them. The new grant, it's not ours, it's like.
Okay, I wanted to see what.
Let me, let me make sure here, Anne, since you've been part of this whole process. Trying to find the cover page here eventually.
Okay, so let me just summarize. There is more money in Voca fees, the Voca, again, Victim of Crimes Act, and the Criminal Fine Account. There's more money in these grants than there has been in previous by unions. So this grant, combined application, allowed us to budget for increasing staff time in the VA's office. If it's not used, we won't, if we don't spend it, we won't get reimbursed the grant. So I want to make sure that that is understood. The Voca side of this grant requires a match. We get to match these Voca dollars with the CFA state dollars. So the match really can be all done that way. However, with increasing that salary, general fund potentially will be matching some benefits if that position does go full-time. I want Anne Winter to be aware of that.
Through, there, Anne, there's been no discussion from that department to move any of these hours to more hours. There is a distribution of the grant to three different employees up there.
Yes.
If there, Anne, it was very clear several years ago that the positions up there are contingent upon this grant by this board of commissioners. And so if there is to be any restructuring up there of more hours that would go up to the benefit side of it, they would have to have that approved by the board of commissioners.
And I think that needs to be conveyed back and forth. I think we're trying to all get on the same page here, so I want everyone to be aware of that in this grant. If, if action is not taken by the county to do something differently at staff time, I do think it's possible for us to modify this grant and change how we're spending the dollars. The Voca requirements, though, that they are exactly for services to victims, which has a predefined line compared to prosecution events. So we're still, you know, that line is discussed quite often and making sure we're not blurring that at all. So this grant that you're working on is our.
So I need some clarification, because I thought that both these grants that I signed still comes to the thirty, roughly thirty-four plus or minus thousand combined per year. You're saying this is more dollars than we budgeted for? I know the new dollars coming in, and it's specific for certain things, it's not for staff time. We haven't applied for that yet, but these, I'm practically looking here, because I thought I.
Yeah, I think that's what allowed us through this grant application to increase that staff time, because it's more, it's higher than what it's been in the past by unions.
Well, this one particular page, and it says section two green award at the top, it's about three white pages in. Talks about the Voca category general of thirty-six thousand five hundred and change per year, and then the CFA of thirteen thousand four thirty.
So, so that, that is.
Yeah, so this is excluding the one-time Voca dollars that we also are eligible for, that were still worth an application for that. There is, there is more money in Voca dollars right now than what we'd seen. That's why the increase in staff time was a possibility and was proposed.
That's good news.
It still requires some match. Okay?
Yeah, Anne, I'm not a hundred percent clear on, and I didn't really look at this real close prior to the meeting, but there's about three different pages that are signed. So just want to be clear on what it is we're ratifying today.
There was a single audit certification letter, and signed that.
Yeah, the single audit, everything is our federal dollars, so they're making sure that we follow the federal audit process, which we have that higher threshold due to county-wide business and so we do that single audit every year.
We did that last summer, handled this, but the county ones there, the county did on the road back.
We did it, and then we were advised when we had said we did.
Okay, well, I'm comfortable that Commissioner Winter would not have signed anything that wasn't good.
Well, there's some things here that I, I don't need to talk about at this moment, but it was a parallel, if you understand.
Yep, understand.
Yeah.
It happens from time to time.
So anyways, I'll move to approve the Voca and CFA non-competitive grant applications that were signed and need to be ratified too.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to sign and ratify the Voca and CFA non-competitive grants as presented today. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Carries. Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Commissioner. Jay, did you have anything on that?
No.
I called the vote, which you mentioned. Okay, next up is Jay Collins, Business Services Director, Insurance Opt-Out Incentive Discussion.
So according to the new benefit rules for City County Insurance, we have the option to offer a hundred dollar a month incentive to employees to opt out of insurance. In order to opt out, they would have to prove, provide proof that they have other group coverage. But also if, if the employee and his or her spouse works for the county and they're both eligible for CIS-covered insurance, then one of them can opt out and receive a two-hundred dollar incentive. I think it makes sense, the county saves money, and we're simply providing an option to the employee. They, they can decide that this makes sense for them or not, whether it benefits them or not. It seems that in many cases, if not most cases, it will benefit the employee to opt out. That decision will be completely given to them. They would still have the right to double cover. And the reason this comes up is, you know, insurance company would like to have all employees covered. They would like as much premium as possible. You know, the more incentive you offer, then the more likely it is that your healthy participants leave the plan, or lose it with, you know, a larger percentage of target users of medical insurance. So we're limited to this, to these amounts, but it's, it's an option. It benefits us as well as, you know, and leave it up to them to decide whether it benefits them.
Have you got any spreadsheet there? Do you have any questions about what that means?
No, Jay, but I will, I'll mention two or three things here. One, we chatted about this, it was more of a question I had for you here a few weeks back, maybe as much as a month back. Just as an option, I think your point is well-taken, and it needs to be really conveyed to employees. We're not in any way trying to encourage someone to drop their county insurance. This is an option that if they're already happy with the coverage that they have through medical means, that this is a way for them to perhaps, on a financial standpoint, be more beneficial. Because not only will they receive the hundred dollars or two-hundred if the case is met for that on a monthly basis, but they'll also not be paying in their share of the premium on that coverage. So when you add it all up, and your chart displays it very well, you know, it can be a significant savings to the employee while they still have coverage for medical means, so.
Yeah, in, in many of these cases where people are double-covered, were paid an enormous amount of money for what ends up being very, very little coverage.
Yes.
Our, our premium now for a family is over sixteen thousand dollars.
Yeah.
As the county's part of it. And sometimes, you know, it will save them a co, some copays, and, you know, it really is small benefit compared to that sixteen thousand.
So.
Well, and we say, save them copays, and it goes back to the point about, you know, some of these coverage categories, the savings they'll have as a result of not having double coverage will more than pay for that.
Yeah.
So they're, they're actually, and, you know, it's individual case by case, as we've discussed, but in a lot of cases, folks are going to actually come out ahead.
So if, if this is approved, I'll send out an informational email, just explaining the, the option that they have. Also, let them know that Nikki and I will be available to help them pencil this out, to see, you know, help them make a decision.
So I have a couple of questions, I think it's a great way for us to look and go forward. My questions aren't in any specific order, but this will add some work to you to have to build practice. So how hard is that, is one part of the question, and the other part is, to that same question, is, is who determines? Is our insurance company a qualified insurance for them to draw out of ours? Because there's multiple insurance coverages out there. The last thing I want is for some of our employees to become ill or, or have a significant disease or something, and their insurance being such a minimal, that they would have been better covered by ours. I, I don't know what the particulars for qualifying the insurance and all those kind of things are.
Okay, good questions. First, the work on payroll in the department is minimal. They would be setting these people up one time, and then it's good to go until they make a change.
I assume.
So really no work. A qualifying plan would be other group coverage. They couldn't, somebody couldn't go out and buy some cheap insurance on their own as an individual. It has to be a group coverage. And then your third question was.
My third question hasn't been asked yet.
And there was, it was one more part of that, huh?
I don't think so. Unless I articulated where I wasn't going, you answered my question.
You know, we've got instant replay, we didn't have Jamie play.
I guess, I maybe never stated right about the, how to track, track it, keep track of it.
Oh, I remember now, you, you mentioned that, you know, you don't want someone to find themselves in a situation where they've got poor coverage, because there's very little risk here, because, you know, what? You're going to find yourself in a situation where you have, in a worst-case scenario, you're going to have maximum out-of-pocket, you know? This, this savings that we're talking about is so substantial that in almost every case, it nearly makes up that, that gap that you have. You know, it helps, it helps you pay for not only, you know, your deductible and your copays, but in most cases, it would get you very far along for meeting your maximum out-of-pocket, if you're up. So I think the risk is, is pretty low.
Don't you think to Commissioner Winter's question, Jay, and we kind of talked about that the other day, you know, there may be qualifying events in any given year, the person finds that not quite as well as you. But they know their history, their medical history, and their costs, and so it's an individual employee's, you know, decision. It, it, that goes without saying, it's their decision, but they also know their circumstances, and so I think it's a great question, and hopefully every employee will look at that. But most of them will do the math and say, oh, we're going to be just fine doing it this way. There'll be some that aren't, and they'll opt not to draw the government.
And those that do opt to opt out, there, there may be some years where it doesn't benefit them, but, you know, that's still going to be their option. And they can decide whether over the long run, you know, even if there are some hiccups and some bumps, I might be better off.
Well, your point on option is important to state, and we couldn't overstate that. All we're doing is giving our employees another option. We're not mandating anything, we're just giving them one more option, and they'll choose to do their financial business.
And in some cases, it may be a big help to some employees.
So third question you texted is, we're given the option to opt out now that we have several employees throughout the county where they now don't take our insurance, because their spouses at another job has insurance. Are we mandated to give them the hundred dollars or whatever it is, so that we're fair and just? What, what is a trigger that we have to do?
Yeah, they would, they would be, they would have the right to claim that, that opt-out incentive.
So they would have to come to us, or would we all, I just want to make sure budgetarily that we, we look at this, and. So because, because we can't, and I'm probably not talking to this book, we have to treat all employees the same, is what we're going with that, so I have just clarification on that.
So Jay was going to turn around, that's a great question, Commissioner. Jay was going to turn around, you can use me as an example.
Well, actually, Anne and I sat down and talked about this, I was looking to see if she was here, and we looked at some cases where we don't think it would be a budget problem this year, and of course, next year, we could budget for it. But, you know, overall, it's a decision that I, I think this makes so much sense, that even if we do have to do a resolution in, in one department or even two departments, you know, it, it's worth it, because we're saving so much more over here, that if we have to come up with a couple of hundred dollars in, in a single department too, as a resolution, I think it still makes sense.
Well, one, as you point that out, Jake, one is the financial question Commissioner Winter's asked, but the other is, it's, it's got to be clear that, yes, people would be entitled to that.
Yes.
That has to.
That would, yeah, and that's, that's the one thing that, you know, it's one more factor that needs to be considered, is what will that cost be? We canceled that out. It's going to make sense for the county to want to do it financially. It's, do we want to make this available to, an option available to our employees?
Well, let's just use a real-life example, in fact, it's, so it's out there. I don't know the CHN, but the, the employee and the spouse.
CHN is children, so, okay, one child.
So the employee and the spouse example, I use myself. The savings, if I had insurance with the county, the savings to the county would be nearly eleven thousand. The out-of-pocket expense to the county would be twelve hundred dollars.
Right.
So we would essentially save ninety-five, approximately ninety-five hundred dollars if I opted out. But since I don't have insurance, it would cost the county, so we'd have to have that covered somewhere else as far as the cost part of it goes. Yeah, so.
I, I think it makes financial sense, and I appreciate that part, but I also think that it makes good sense for employees, their financial sense also. My biggest concern with this is make sure our employees have the coverage they have, where it has to be a group policy to qualify to have the coverage. I, I've become very comfortable with this whole thing because of the benefits and the health of our, our employees are important, you know, to be able to operate in. So that was my real one concern, is, is that I wanted to make sure that it wasn't just a unbelievable high deductible insurance would qualify somebody to opt out and put them in possible financial problems whenever that happened.
Now, that, that wouldn't be the case. There will be people, you know, that, it just doesn't make sense, you know, to, to opt out, that they need to be double-covered, and that will be their right.
So this is for action today?
If, if you choose to, yes.
I, after our discussion today, I've become very comfortable with it myself. I guess before I make a motion, do you have other questions?
Nope.
I'll make a motion to adopt the insurance opt-out, opt-out incentive program as presented.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to adopt the insurance opt-out incentive as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Jay, thanks for your late work on that.
Yes.
Behind the spin. It's a great deal. Okay, before we go to meeting minutes, let's go to the Schmink Letter, Museum Letter Edition.
Okay, this is pretty much an update. As everybody knows, I brought this Schmink potential transfer of ownership to the county, to the full board here two or three weeks ago, maybe longer than that. Asked for the support from the board, the board looks supportive, and actually says, go ahead, go forward, and I can't remember if I even made the motion to pursue this, if I was in motion to pursue this. So this is just to let you know that the letter of intent came, legal counsel reviewed the letter of intent, each commissioner's seen it, and I have signed it, and that letter of intent has went forward. So I don't believe that we need to ratify this as far as a motion or anything. If the region, the AR region is able to move this forward, it's just to show the intent to get there, and then they're going to leave the documents to come at that time.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Commissioner, for all your work on that. So last item of business on the regular other businesses meeting minutes.
So those are from, we have four subset meeting minutes, January 5th, January 6th, January 19th, and January 20th. I did have some addition put on one of them, Denise has ordered one, which one will us have? Did the, did the other commissioners get a copy of my addition?
They did not.
They did not, okay. This has to do with the Edmunds property transfer. I have Denise put in there, digging for it. My comment is that I, in paraphrasing, that I generally don't approve of more ownership of private lands from government, and also that at this meeting, I stated that if the landowners and the community supported this, that that's a direction that could be supported. So with that, that's in there, I just didn't sign it.
Okay.
With that, I would like to move to approve those four sets amended as stated with that addition.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes with the additions, corrections, as stated for January 5th, 6th, 19th, and 20th. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Actually, I find it after the motion.
There you go, okay. Sure. Okay. So I don't know, Denise, do you have any department updates that you wanted to share?
I can't really think of anything, I've been busy, busy, but.
Well, that's.
No updates.
That's an update in itself.
Yeah.
Yeah. And legal counsel didn't get back to you with any legal updates at all.
He didn't really have any updates, he did forward the letter to, um, that was all.
So that one, for exactly the same reason. So, Commissioner, if you don't have anything else.
Nope.
We'll go ahead at eleven twenty-five, and adjourn our regular session moving for February 3rd, 2016.